It is six thirty, so we will call the meeting to order. We're joined tonight with a quorum with representative, representing, you can tell that I figured the state out today. But council member Tim Fries and council member Judge Schultz, council member Omar Martinez. Is there approval of the agenda?
Will she approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. And the only thing that we have is the city council meeting that's from February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. And I establish the consent agenda is approved. Next up is the presentation of the library's strategic plan and annual report by the library director, Ally Par Smith.
So in the packet we have presented the strategic plan for the West Liberty Public Library. Outlined in there are the community members involved in this process. We did work with Becky Heil through the State Library, that is a service that we received because we are part of the State Library's programming team. So thankfully, it was all pretty. Becky had us do two, kind of a hybrid choice or decision is what we made for the process. We did both a combination of phone calls and in-person community meetings. The one meeting we did here towards English speakers and the other meeting we did here towards Spanish speakers. We had a decent amount of turnout at both and were able to compile that information, which has been listed on a page four of the report. Becky likes to focus on the, the community as a whole at the very first session, as opposed to talking about the library, just kind of making sure to emphasize what the community needs. And then at the second meeting is when we address the, how the library can meet those needs. So what was determined, there are a total of eighteen service response, library service responses. We narrowed it down to eight and then further narrowed it down to three. Or we narrowed it down to four and combined one of them into the others. So the goals that we ended up with are know your community, satisfy curiosity, and celebrate diversity. Within those goals, we have lead measures or objectives, which will be that our community will have a centralized hub for information and updates on local events. The goal is to have that be both physical and digital, and we are working with the city on that one. Then also working with the city, newcomers of all kinds will receive essential resources to thrive in our community. We want to try to come up with, help develop a newcomer packet that can go out with utility bills or with when people sign up for utilities for the first time, as well as trying to organize some sort of newcomer welcome wagon event with local organizations, helping with the planning, making sure that we have VIPs present, so that people can be introduced to the people who they can go to if they need help or have questions or have ideas. We are also working on partnering with Chamber on that one. And then we are going to be working on displaying our own services more loudly and throughout the community. A lot of the things that came up with what were thoughts that the library should offer, we're already doing, people just didn't know. Then for satisfy curiosity, we're hoping that all ages will be able to find services and programs to support their hobbies and leisure interests. We do want to support that throughout the community, but we are obviously focused more on the library itself. And then residents will be comfortable with existing and new technologies. We'll be launching a luncheon learn starting in September, on the first Thursday of the month. And until, I have a vague curriculum developed until people start to give me ideas of what they would like to learn more about. We're also hoping to increase the maker type technologies available in the library. We'll be doing that through grant funding. So having things that are, stuff that people don't necessarily want to invest their own money in because it's not something they would necessarily use all the time, but would like to have access to. So like a three D printer, a blow forge, which is like a CNC printer cutter. And we do have a cricket already, but we'd like to get one that is a little more robust so that we don't have to worry about it when we go. We'll probably also look at getting a library of things. It's a popular concept amongst libraries right now, which is like to check out tools and equipment so that people who, again, you use it once or twice a year, you don't necessarily feel the need to buy it, you could probably borrow it from the library. We're also hoping to create, make our archives more accessible and relevant to our community. We do have an archive in the basement of the library. This is again, something that not a lot of people know exists. It's close to the public at the moment. We will pull things out for people as they ask for them, which they do. But we currently have a team of volunteers working on applying our collection development policy to that. The volunteers are Phyllis Owen Serba and Pam Schnicker and Pam Weaver. And the three of them, I think, are going to be a great team to help us work through that collection and, and get it focused. We hope that then we'll be able to digitize, which will be partnering with the city. And my hope is that we can also talk with partnering with Nichols and Adalissa as well and help digitize any materials that are in those communities as well as partnering with the depot and getting as much as we can online so that people can have access to that. We already have our newspapers digitized and they are searchable, so people can, it makes our lives way easier in the library. I just recently had somebody from, what was it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was like Baxter, Iowa or something like that, who called and asked for it. And I was able to very easily search for it and find it and email it to her all on the same phone call. And she got it in, in that kind of fashion. Then we're hoping to celebrate diversity. Residents will have access to programs and services that reflect our community's diverse heritage. The first thing that we're doing with that is we're doing Lotteria. So on the third Sunday of every month, we have Lotteria, which for those who don't know is Mexican bingo with pictures. We have probably the biggest turnout of any adult program we've ever had at those events. And we're looking at ways to explore that and expand it. We're looking at also doing a monthly recipe swap potluck in the future and hopefully generating some sort of community book out of it. I know that those used to happen a lot more often than they do now, but we thought it would be a fun way to make sure that we, we're kind of recording that history. And then looking at partnering with local organizations such as the Shaver and the Parks Department for movies in the park. So this year we'll be doing that at the launch of our summer reading program. Six and seven, of June. And having vendors there and one showing will be, it'll be the same movie both nights. One showing will be in English with Spanish subtitles and the other showing will be in Spanish with English subtitles. We are also going to be working to establish partnerships to support the pursuit of citizenship and engagement. Not sure what the status of our citizenship programs is in the community at the moment. So we want to find who's doing those things and get them all together so that we can coordinate an effort to get the information out to people who are looking to pursue that. The other thing is with that community hub that we're going to have physically in the library, we would like to have information on running for office. We would like to have information on how to be participating boards and commissions, things like that. How to get people more engaged with our community. And then kind of paramount to everything we do with the library, we're trying to prioritize that English and Spanish speakers will both feel comfortable engaging with the library. We've worked really hard over the past five years to make sure that we have a majority Spanish speaking staff. And now we are actually advertising that we have a majority Spanish speaking staff and who speaks Spanish. So as you walk into the upstairs level, which is where most of the adults go to do printing classes, getting asked questions, things like that, we have a sign that says whether or not the person sitting at the desk speaks Spanish so that we don't have to do the awkward dance of trying to determine who speaks what. We're also hoping to get more, significantly more bilingual signage and continuing to promote hiring bilingual employees and always having a Spanish speaker in the building, which we more often than not do. There are very few times where it's just the intent, so. That's kind of our goal. Underneath those goals, we have, you know, steps to reaching them. And then I did include a graphic, we do have that graphic translated. I'm still working on translating those, getting the, the whole rest of the strategic plan translated in Spanish. But that should be available on our website soon. And then the rest is a bunch of statistics, which is our annual report. Our ordinance, as I was just talking with the clerk today, I am supposed to present an annual, or the board is supposed to present the annual report to council immediately following the close of the fiscal year. Pretty sure it's never done. Providing the information that we submit to the State Library answers all of the questions that are required in our ordinance. So that is what I have provided for both the last fiscal year and the previous fiscal year. We are seeing growth, continued growth and looking to expand our, and are looking at expanding our collections. I did provide a summary, so that was what the, what I submitted to our board. And then again, the data that's supported. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Are there questions for the library director?
Get things on our library.
Yes.
I actually had an opportunity to, to brag about our working relationship today. So.
I will attest.
Thank you for the opportunity. Shared with a council member from Clive, speaking to them about, you know, budget and things, but had communicated that since you were beginning here, you'd reach out to me and we've been working and a lot of these things that you have in your report.
I know that after the conversation you tried to move your presentation off.
Yeah, yeah, so. So it's good to share that.
Mr. Mayor, do I, do we need a motion to receive and file this report and annual survey?
Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, all right, it's been moved. And second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for the report.
So we will be getting invitations out and we will be posting for it, but the library's annual meeting is on March twenty-sixth, where we will be having tours of the library. There will also be, we're having a speaker, her name is Shauna Stewart. She did the Space Venus assessment that we recently had completed. She's also the director of the Carnegie Libraries in Iowa Program. So she's very intimately familiar with the history of our building in particular. And so she'll be doing a, a talk as well as myself. Type of refreshments and hopefully music will be there. It'll be at seven o'clock on the twenty-sixth. Maybe we'll get it set up.
I should have, when I did the roll call, I should have mentioned that council member Dominguez is excused. That she has helped issues, so I'm not here for that. All right, next up is item number five, reports. And first is five A from the city engineer Leo Foley and who is not here. So anything that you can add, city manager Gertie?
So Mr. Foley is out of the office this week. And prior to his leaving, you'll see on the agenda tonight, we have the Evans agreement. And so we can talk a little bit more about that when we get to that.
Okay.
Also that, staff has just referred that we're continuing trying to work through the well number two issues, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, all right.
Unless you have questions.
Okay, next up are any city staff reports, and I don't see any that we have there. And then item five C is, I thought it would be good for council member Friesick and I to give you an update that we've been involved in the meetings with organizing the fire department. So do you want to start or I could give a start and?
No, as a mayor, it's been a little bit before and we've sat, we've had two now?
Yeah.
Three, I think. This is a process of where we're starting slow and everything's getting organized. And we've looked at, we've got a chairperson or a president.
Yeah.
With Mr. Brand, so maybe we can.
Yeah, well, so the, the twenty eighty agreement had language in it that by the second Monday of the month, following the execution of the agreement, we should have a meeting to work on or to start organizing. So that was February tenth, so that was our first meeting. And then we, at that meeting, elected Dick Brand as the president of the board. And we deferred on the rules, the bylaws. We'll need, we have the twenty eight E agreement, but we will need articles of incorporation and bylaws and need to incorporate. So we're in the process of developing that. We sent out RFPs to four attorneys to see if they would be, are willing to do the review of the documents and submit those. So we worked again Monday evening till eight fifteen or so, so last evening on it. And we're meeting again on March twenty-fourth at six thirty P M. And of course, these are open meetings that are posted as well. So if you're ever interested in attending the meetings, you're more than welcome to attend the meetings as well. The main, one of the main things we've tried to look at, what's available for budgeting. And so we've had quite a bit of discussion about, this will be a fifty fifty between the rural trustees and the city of West Liberty. The total amount available for fire protection and the ambulance service is fifteen, it's a hundred and, excuse me.
Hundred and fifteen.
A hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars, excuse me, for, for some reason, we've been getting the numbers incorrect on that. So the twenty eight E agreement for the ambulance is still in effect. And both the rural trustees and the city of West Liberty are putting up twenty thousand for that. So that needed to come out of our portion that could go toward fire protection. So last evening, we approved to send to the council. And the rural trustees are already through their process on this. As I understand it, send to the council, the recommendation that the council approved, ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars. So it would be a total operating budget of a hundred and ninety-one thousand, starting July first. So we have made it clear that we, as members of this committee, do not have final say. That, that's final say that remains with the council. So that's unless council member.
No, I think you stated most of the work that's been done up to this point is, is what he stated so far. And we still got a ways to go to get this. And when we get the, you guys were able to look at the budget and everything to see how far it's come along so far. And, but the bylaws is another big portion of it also. So I think we're in the right step in the right direction. And it's just taking a little bit of time, but once, once all this gets decided, I mean, it's just going to be very smooth after that.
Yeah. I did get a call this evening before the meeting from one of the members of the committee, Melanie Russell, that this group approved. And she offered to come tonight if, if there were questions. And I'm sure would come to council anytime if there are questions for her as well. So with that, are there any questions?
I just wanted to clarify the one hundred and ninety-one thousand that, that we're going to have as a starting point, July first. It is that, is fire protection and the existing twenty eighty agreement we have combined? Is that correct?
No. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. So the total amount that the city will spend will be a hundred and fifteen thousand.
For fire?
No, no. The ambulance is this interesting characteristic because the ambulance is part of the inventory owned by this, that will be owned by this new entity. But we're transferring over those services at a later date.
Right.
And so this is, it's split out. So twenty thousand was taken from the hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred, making it ninety-five thousand, five hundred. That will go into this agency starting July first. Am I clear on that?
So, so as the city works through our overall budget, we still will have an ambulance portion that will have to be submitted with the city's budget. And with that said, though, we've already identified revenues, but they're going to have to find us some additional, we'll have to discuss additional revenues. And that very well could have to go with this transition. I've talked to the mayor that that may be, you know, some discussion with the agency board as we work through it.
Okay.
Yeah. I will be recommending to the county, there are two fire funds that the city currently has. And I'll be recommending the trust and agency. Be transferred over as soon as the agency is able to accept the money. And that will give some money for the legal things. Maybe getting a clerk on, a part-time clerk on staff to do some of the work will, will come out of that money. But again, that will be the council's decision, but it will, I have said publicly several times that it will be my recommendation. That's a fund with about three hundred thousand dollars in it. And then the ambulance fund will stay with the city until the agency is able to take over of the EMS portion here. Yeah, good question. All right, are there other questions? I think it will be good for us to do this periodically and let you know where things are going with it. All right, next up is item number six. Vendor voucher claims in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or four hundred and twenty thousand eighty-eight dollars and four cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item number seven, public comments and or correspondence, the time set aside for the public to speak on topics of city business other than those listed in the agenda. And we ask that you state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than two minutes. Are there public comments? Are there public comments? Are there public comments? Hearing none, I will move on to public comments and correspondence that the council has received and start with council member Martinez.
I had a little meeting with Leon, talked about some new stuff going on and then other things. Both counseling. Went well, got a tour of the building, got to see all the rooms.
Did you like it?
There's a lot of potential. A lot of potential. The ideas that she has, the boys have mentioned here and everything, I think it's super cool. So I'm excited to see where we go with that building.
Yeah, we have a buildings and ground committee coming up Thursday too. And the interest in the building, I think it's going to be something, so. That's it? Council member?
I have none.
Okay. Bear protein, Victor.
I want to give apologies to anyone that tried to reach out to me. Unfortunately, I cannot have access to my email right now. And I discussed it with Nick and I'm going to meet with him tomorrow morning. But for some reason, the email and the, what do you call that? The Microsoft are, are, is glitching and it won't let me go in and with my current password or change the password. So I have to have Nick set it up again. So if anybody tried to reach out to me, I still unable to get any notifications yet, so. But hopefully tomorrow that will be resolved.
Yeah, that's my problem too.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. All right, council member Friesick.
I have not read it.
All right. Okay, city manager. City clerk.
I just received a large FOIA request that I will be working on. But other than that, I do not have any correspondence at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, new business, AA, discussion and appropriate action by the city council on draft RFQ for engineering services to be sent out to engineering firms. Process will be discussion, then motion, and then consent agenda. So anything with discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to send out the RFP?
Motion to send this out.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there, oh, then it is a consent vote, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and that will be sent out. A B, discussion and appropriate action on the twenty twenty-five chamber events are on the twenty twenty-five chamber events. And I see that we have the chamber director here. So would you like to start?
Sure, there's nothing incredibly different about what I have requested here from the chamber. I guess, starting with the weekly farmer, weekly farmers market, we're asking once again for the closure of that portion of Spencer Street. Every Wednesday from two thirty to seven thirty. What do I have? It's Wednesday starting five, seven, May, May seventh to August twenty, no, October twenty-nine, sorry.
Yeah.
Those are both Wednesdays, so. We're hoping to grow that out this year. We are looking for a market director, so if anyone knows anyone that would be interested in taking that on. I think there's a lot of room for growth there, looking at the option, but those are what we're looking at. But those are the times, those are the same times from last year that we're looking at for the weekly farmers market. And then the other two, picnic in the park. Basically, we want to take over Kimberly like we do every year. And the request, of course, is the free swimming. The city usually offers free swim during that time. We're requesting that once again. Uh, what else? Yeah, so then there's the shelters. We will need access to all the PowerPoints. I think last year the city cleaned the porta potties before the event, so.
I think they, we had them serviced before, yeah.
That would be fantastic if we could do that again. And I don't know if this is officially requested or not, but we would like police presence there. Just because you never know what's going to happen. We're hoping for ten to twenty different vendors in Kimberly Park. That same day, of course, is the Musketin County Fair Parade. And if you have noticed, the route has changed a little from last year. We have our route. But last year, they had them double back and come in the same way they came out, which confused people. And I don't quite understand why it was done that way last year. But this year, we have our route starting at the fairgrounds, going north on Calhoun, west on Maxine, south on Elm. Then they head down to Prairie Street, south on Prairie Street, south on Lola, and then come into the back end of the fairgrounds, which I think is just.
I think that's how it used to be.
It's how it used to be. I don't know why it wasn't that way last year, but we fixed that. I just wanted to make clear, I, I have a map where I would like barricades. We will need police presence. We didn't last year, but I specifically requested a West Liberty police officer to lead the parade. We just need one officer to do that. I didn't realize that was a thing we needed until last year when I did it for the first time. So that's what we're requesting for that. So those are the, those are the three. So those are the, those are the three. The three closures events that I have before you tonight, if you have any questions for me.
Even though that these are the same activities, I know people rely, I know, like, look forward to them every year. So uh, there is a large presence of the population that attends these things, so just wanna thank you for organizing this and getting ready for it.
Well, it hasn't been completely organized yet, but.
It's a good start, yes.
Good point. Um, I will come before you at some point with the holiday open house stuff, but.
Look forward to that, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll start with these, because these are coming quicker than. Than we expect. We'll be, we'll be at picnic in the park in the parade before we know it.
Yeah.
Um, I did have a question um for city manager.
Right.
Uh, did we or are, or can we, I know I've talked to you in the past, upgrade that power pole down the corner of Third and By Center?
To, um, I'll circle back around, and um, so Cody and I have spoke about it um last year.
Okay.
Uh, but we were, but we were kinda late in the season, um, but he did look, um, they did look at that, and so let me go back with him. Um, and see if we've got that in the plans or get that in the plans to upgrade it. Um, because I know, I know with the expansion of this, with the farmers market and then with the festivals.
Yeah, it's, it saves from, especially from those generators. But I know that has been discussed at various times, yeah, so if we could. Upgrade that pole in order to meet the needs, that would be great. Okay.
Did we cover everything you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and other discussion besides what we've had?
I'll follow up with council, I'll probably about that.
All right, motion to approve um the uh chamber events. Motion to approve, second? Second. Um, all those in favor signify by saying, uh, wait. Yeah, this one is consent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and uh it is approved.
On behalf of the chamber, I think you know city has always worked with us really well with the house, and we look forward to keeping that going, so.
Good, yeah.
If any of you ever have any questions, please feel free to contact me.
Yeah, good. All right, eight C, resolution twenty twenty-five zero three zero four hyphen two two two. A resolution for disposal of items uh for the West Liberty Police Department in West Liberty, Iowa.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Is there discussion?
I'm assuming these are things that are no longer used or calculated, not working anymore, just kind of usual.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the, um, they are obsolete. Um, and I know that chief was gonna try to look and see. Um, if there was anyone that as part of the disposal that would be wanting to, that we could donate um some of those items to. Um, so I do know that that's part of his. Part of his plan with the disposal was looking to see if we could donate them um possibly to a smaller um. Uh, community, um, or if there's any um overseas. Um, cause I know he's had some connections in the past with some of the equipment that we've donated. So um, we can kind, we can circle back around, um, once I, um, unfortunately, he's out of the office this evening, so, but. I can uh hold up with him and report back to council, okay?
No, I'm good.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Prezic?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yeah.
Motion passes four zero.
Item eight D, resolution twenty twenty-five zero three zero four hyphen two two three. A resolution to approve the ru- roofing quote from Iowa Roofing uh coatings uh. For the re-roofing of the former ELC building in West Liberty. Um, it has been leaking. So it needs to be replaced. Um, is there a motion?
Oh, sorry. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for replacing the roofing with the Kevlar appliances, John.
Is there a second? Second, is there discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like to add, um, uh, based on your um action tonight, um, the next steps would be. Um, the clerk and I have spoke with the city's financial advisor, Nate Summers, and um. As part of that debt fund that we have, that um you've been directed to work to lower the balance. What we proposed is doing a, um, essentially a short-term note with one of our financial institutions. Where we would create through public uh hearings, a um, a note for the. The amount of uh two hundred thousand, um, and then we would use the debt. Uh, fund to pay back that note to the bank in one day. Um, the reason why it's two hundred thousand is because we don't know if there would be a day's interest, there will be bonding fees. Um, but, so we're just trying to set those numbers high um to cover those costs, but whatever we wouldn't use, then of course would then stay in the debt fund. But we have to go through a bonding process in order to utilize um the debt, and um, so you'll be seeing that. Again, based on action, you'll be seeing, you would be seeing those next steps then in the future.
Yeah, good. Okay, is there further discussion?
I thought it was very good spelled out in here about the, the two differences.
Yeah.
And also the, the head references and uh. Um, warranties, that was all good points in my book.
And I wanna recognize um Public Works Director, um Reinhardt did, um, he took this on and he. Um, actually, one of the meetings was out there in that very frigid temperatures, and um. And the recommendation is coming from uh the organization, they went up um not only once but twice. And they tested and tore into it, so um we both felt um because of the extensive. Work just to give a bid that um we felt comfortable, but I wanna, I wanna recognize uh Mr. Reinhardt for the work that he did. Uh, in terms of it, so, well done.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Prezic?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
The rest stated, we'll um follow up with Mr. Summers and then we'll, we'll strike the bonding process.
Great.
If you have any questions during that, um, just please reach out to the clerk and myself.
Okay.
Eight E, resolution twenty twenty-five zero three zero four hyphen two two four. A resolution to approve the Evans Sewer Agreement and set up the timetable for the project in West Liberty. Um, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the Evans Sewer Agreement?
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, is there discussion?
Um, so in order for the um expansion of the um, the sewer uh main. We are needing to um. Um, have access to the right-of-way uh between the Wileys' property clear through to their new. Project that will then establish us for future expansion. Um, in order to do so, uh, since we'll be having to look at a temporary lift. Lift station to carry the sewer, um, we and the city have um entered, we offered up an agreement. That we would rebate essentially or reimburse for the uh them paying upfront for the lift station. Um, to allow that um to, to go through, so we can have. The sewage being going to the main until we can um future, in the future, do the. Expansion to a full lift station. Um, so. This would be the property owner, and so then there's not a permit fee on, on the city's side of it. Because it would be the property owner that's um installing it, because the primary function on this right now is to serve. Um, the new building and the existing building, so then they can vacate their subject. And I would just remind, as part of their expansion, um, they have not requested uh tax increment finance or any other. Um, incentives, so uh my recommendation is to support the agreement. Um, as, since they haven't requested any other incentives, and then this will give us the access to the right-of-way. Uh, which is a pretty significant, because they'll be doing bearing electric um along with the sewer. And again, that's getting us from an economic development that's getting us expansion to the west, so. And I didn't know if you had any other questions.
No.
Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Prezic?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Eight F, resolution twenty twenty-five zero three zero four hyphen two two five. A resolution to approve uh to approve reimbursement to the West Liberty Locker. Uh, West Liberty Economic Development Managing Fund grant. Um, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Second, it's been moved and seconded, is there discussion?
So as you can see, if you um have visited the store or as you've been by, you can see. That the vances have expanded and it, and it looks really nice, and um. And again, I mean, uh, just as we were speaking about today in economic development, a bigger part of that is sustaining our current businesses. And the expansion of those business, businesses are also our work in that, and so um our recommendation is um to approve the uh reimbursement.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I did business with them for a few years, I don't know, and are quite a few years, actually, and they're actually the only uh, uh. Uh, locker around that actually does like medicine and stuff like that, yeah, and you, I mean, the, the business that comes in there is. To me, unbelievable, that what they're putting together.
And the product is excellent.
Yes, I've never had any, there's a lot of people from outside the area that come here, yeah, so.
Nice.
And I think if I understood, this is part to help with that, Venice and, yeah, yeah.
All right, further discussion. Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Prezic?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Next up is uh eight G, resolution twenty twenty-five zero three zero four hyphen two two six. A resolution waiving building permit fees on behalf of the West Liberty Heritage Foundation for Beers. And the Saint um John Stagecoach Inn. Uh, so is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, uh, on, um, I would like to go ahead and uh make a motion to approve this resolution. Uh, I think it's significant and important because of the fact that the Heritage Foundation campus. Is very valuable to the city and the historical usage.
Great. Is there a second? Second, it's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion?
I also agree. I think that there's a lot of people that use that area down there. To uh, to walk, oh, there's a nice walkway and to walk, and I know there's. Um, lots to see, and a museum is really good, so I think it makes sense, yeah.
Again, in addition to your economic development and tourism and just from our local um community use as well. It's in line with what we previously requested, um, so we have a consistent practice. With another entity here just recently, and um, yeah.
I am all for um waiving fees, especially for community development. Um, I believe that can be found in many instances, so I'm just curious if. If residents or businesses are coming to the city requesting us to remove their fees, or is there. Uh, list of thinking that goes into it, because. Just in, in reducing financial burdens on residents and businesses, that could be anybody doing anything, so. Charging the permit fees, do we need to even be charging them? Is that something, I haven't looked into this, but is that what surrounding areas do too, if they're building permit fees and whatnot as well?
Yeah, um, so just to answer the first question, um, we, we do not offer up to waive fees. It's a request that the um developer um has to bring to council. Um, and part of that review or our recommendation to you is based on. Um, does it fit economic development? Is it a nonprofit entity? Um, is it something that we can look at, um, a local option, sales tax. Um, benefit, because people are going to be, if they're spending money in the community visiting. Then we're receiving a revenue of tax because of that purpose. If it's a private owner or a um, an individual business. Um, there are times where there's other incentives that we can offer, um, that maybe a nonprofit isn't. Um, that that would not be available to them. So, um, if a private person was to come in, I, they still have the same right to come to council and request to have those fees removed. It would just be, um, when you're looking at private ownership versus something that's open to the public. And the, the idea of them, you know, shopping local or being in the community for tourism. Um, what's the impact if we waive it? That allows them to have more money to invest. Um, to create um a destination or um something to come to our community about as part of the economic development. Um, however, though, in, in the future, council would like to. Maybe create some type of a policy or a procedure for staff to follow. Um, when we're, we can certainly take a look at that, but as of right now, if anybody would come to the city requesting, our, our communication would be to them is that. Um, it has to come before council to be reviewed. Okay?
Thank you. I only ask just because this is now.
Yeah.
Another time, and knowing all that's going on in the city, I could only expect no more big projects happening, more things going on and just. I think I'll be on some.
Yeah, I think the last time we did this was for the fairgrounds.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I think council member should make up a good point.
Yeah.
Um, but those would be, I mean, those would be common in communities where they would offer up the incentive to waive. And I can say that on other developments in the community, uh, private developments, because we weren't able to offer like a tax increment finance. Um, I know Mr. Akers had a development that we were able to negotiate. Um, some other incentives in order to um develop the properties or, um, I know. And there's been others that, again, if they are not able to have other incentives, we try to be flexible and creative. But at the same time, make sure that we're not being inconsistent when we're, when we're offering those incentives.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Prezic?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Next up is item uh eight H, a motion to authorize the mayor to retain an attorney to uh. Serve as an independent investigator for a confidential internal workplace investigation. To begin as soon as possible and authorizing the mayor to be the point of contact for the independent investigator. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, um, discussion, uh, we're talking about a confidential matter, but uh if there are questions, I can. Try to answer as much as I can.
This is to bring in a, basically a separate attorney?
Yes.
To oversee the.
To.
Personal matter?
Yeah, to, to work on the uh confidential internal workplace investigation. All right, is there further discussion?
Is this normal practice or is this a, and ask a request?
It, it's a request, uh, and uh, it's a request, and it's something I haven't dealt with before. Uh, but uh, the direction that I think is appropriate to, to have that independence, so.
Um, knowing that our clerk here is our records keeper, would she be involved in the correspondences and filtering through those? At all, or would it solely just be you?
Uh, I'm the point of contact. There will be a mechanism for. Information to be shared, and I would imagine. Information to be shared, and I would imagine that that becomes a clerk's duty to file that information away. I don't know who files personnel documents, whether that is, or.
Maybe the clerk, unless the clerk is a part of the investigation, and maybe they have to re, uh, sign it over possibly to the deputy clerk.
Oh, yes, the clerk would be involved.
Yes, yeah, sorry. Could have answered yes to.
Following this process in my head.
Are there other questions? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Freezak?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Next up is item eight I, uh, set the date for the public hearing on, uh, budget amendment number two for March eighteenth. Two thousand twenty five at six thirty P M. Any objections to that date?
Is that?
Uh, it will be the council meeting, so it'll be the second Tuesday. Um, or the third Tuesday, I'm sorry. One of the things about. February, March is for the first part of the month, the month of March, they're kind of the same as the previous month.
And so, and, and we'll provide the budget amendment, um, and there's notes on there, um, but just to recap, um. The resolutions that you previously approved, um, with those expenditures. For the electric, um, for the library capital project. Um, and, uh, I think we have a, a public works cost because of the storm damage. Um, and we hadn't received reimb, reimbursement with PMA as of current. Um, those would be the things that are impacting the budget amendments.
Uh, I will be unable to attend that as I'll be out of state, so I just wanted, just you to know that, yeah.
We'll just come and make sure that we have a.
Yeah, I don't know if, if, uh, I'm hoping, uh, uh, council member Dominguez can, uh, join us then. Uh, any conflicts with the other three members of the council? Okay, all right. So also, um, then we go to eight J, uh, set the date for the budget work session. That will be our workstation, uh, that, this month, uh, and that will be at five thirty P M. So I'm hoping that the other time works for everyone, that this time will work as well. Unless there's a conflict, we'll proceed with that. All right. Eight K, set the date for the maximum tax levy hearing for April first, two thousand twenty five at six P M. Does that work with votes?
It'll be the first meeting.
First meeting for April.
What time is? Uh, it's.
No fooling.
The clerk can, if, the clerk can, um, like, the clerk explained, if there's, there's new rules around. Um, where we have to do two separate meetings, if you remember, and I keep saying it, let the clerks do it.
Um, so on both of these, you will see that the meetings for these are starting at six P M. Because we have to have a clear start and finish to those meetings before we can go into our actual council meeting. So we have to have a true break within there before we can start that meeting, and that's why it's at six P M. Um, but those are our last two meetings for us to give our findings, because everything's due on Friday.
Right now, I have a conflict that evening, but I'll see if I can try and change that.
Okay, and that would be the regular council meeting, uh, too, so. Uh, let me again check, I'm hoping that council member Dominguez, uh, can join us, but the other three have. It works for everyone else, okay. All right, then we have eight L, um, the budget hearing for April fifteenth at six, uh, P M. Hoping that works. And again, it's a regular council meeting. All right, item number nine, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned.
Mayor, you have time, soon there's other stuff.
Oh, sure.